Please join me for the paper.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Thank you all for being here for the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two school board meeting. Can I get a roll call, please? Ms. Angelo Steele.
Here.
Ms. Liskini.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso.
Here.
Next is the adoption of the agenda. To recommend the Board of Education approve the agenda for the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four school board regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve? I got a second?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Any additions or corrections to that? Cindy Nunn, roll call. Ms. Martindale. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, yes. Um, next is approval of the minutes for the two, or October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four school board, um, meeting. Can I get a motion to, um, approve those?
We'll move, Liskini.
Misses Liskini, can I get a second? Miss Angelo Steele. Any additions or corrections to that? Cindy Nunn, roll call. Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Ms. Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yeah.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Uh, yes. Um, starting out, we have some presentations this evening. The first will be by Ms. Kathy McFarlane with the Ohio School Board Association. Kathy.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Gosh, that's nice. Hi.
Jamie relates.
We get each other, yes, yes. Thank you. So, first of all, good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me some time tonight. I'm Kathy McFarlane. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Ohio School Board Association. Um, OSBA's mission is to serve Ohio's public school board members in the diverse districts that they represent. As a member-driven association, OSBA's mission would not be accomplished without the work of dedicated members who serve as leaders of the organization. We, we realize that being a school, school, excuse me, school board member can be a full-time job, and taking on the additional responsibility of serving at the state level is a significant additional commitment. I'm here tonight to recognize and thank one of the valued leaders of our association, Denise DeAngelo Steele, for her service as a member of OSBA's twenty-twenty-four Board of Trustees. Not only does she, uh, lead the association as a trustee, but she also serves on the Central Region Executive Committee. Denise, in recognition and appreciation of your service as a member of OSBA's Board of Trustees, I'd like to present you with this plaque, "Which States?" Denise is hereby recognized by the Ohio School Board Association for outstanding service as a member of the OSBA Board of Trustees. You do an official, oh, yeah, okay. Give her that. Here, I'll take this. Yep, yep. All right. Denise, four. Yep. He didn't know which way. We want to. Okay. Thank you. Of course. And I've got one more, real quickly. I also have a plaque for you, um, the board, to express our thanks to the entire Southwestern City Schools. Association recognizes the Southwestern City Schools for its support and encouragement to Denise as a member of the OSBA Board of Trustees. Thank you again for welcoming me, and thank you for sharing Denise with OSBA. Hi. Yeah. Yeah, sweetie, what's going on? What? In their apartment? No. Is it your front? Let's do a smirk. Okay, you ready? Here we go. Ready, three. Well, you're Christmas. Okay, I'm gonna get out of it so you can take a picture of them. All right, ready? Okay. Thank you. Good very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Denise. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on now, we got school spotlight. We're gonna have Brittany McDaniels with Finland Elementary School.
Right, good evening, President Bosso, Vice President Martindale, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Banks and Mr. Gerstey. My name is Brittany McDaniel, and I have the privilege of serving as the principal at Finland Elementary School. I'm here tonight to share this month's school spotlight segment with you and the public. All right, at Finland Elementary, about eighty to eighty-five percent of our students come to kindergarten and not ready for kindergarten, according to the Kindergarten Readiness Assessment. My parents, staff, and community members work diligently to make sure they're ready to meet those goals by the time they leave us. Our state report card meets state standards with the highlights in progress and gap closure. We teach our students about goal setting and perseverance and how to increase their achievement scores. We're proud of our students, but our journey is not over. The key to creating a place where the whole child is cared for and their basic needs are met. So, we learn, so, and our key is to create a place where the whole child is cared for and their basic needs are met. So, in order to do that, we work with community partnerships. So, we've established, uh, partnerships for several community, um, members. One is Operation Warm, where they provided warm coats for our students this year. Samaritan's Feet, every student walked away with a new pair of shoes and a pair of socks. Second and Seventh, Ohio State Athletes come and read to the students to talk about the importance of literacy. Uh, the Big Read comes this Friday, and it's an organization of, um, grandparents that come and read to the students, and we invite grandparents from our school to join them. We have a set of knitting rambles that like to provide hats to all of our kids, so we always provide a little hats. Uh, Cypress Church in Grove City dropped off clothes for our clinic to provide the kids with clothes that fit. Uh, Widen's Ho, Ho, Ho just sent us seventy-five wagons full of food for the holidays. And Tucker Johns is putting on a, um, I don't know how to say it, Porter John Toys for Tots. In our parking lot, this is, uh, collect toys for our families. So, that should be exciting. That's our first event of that kind, so that should be fun. All right, we also teach our kids about giving. So, our sock drive in October collected five hundred twenty-six pairs of socks to donate to their homes. We've created opportunities to support our families with these Title I Days and a night, and our Guardian Group also supports our students. They're not growing up in traditional households. Finally, and most importantly, Finland is a family. We collaborate as a building to create a learning community where all students feel welcomed and feel like they belong. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I, I have been in touch, um, I was gonna mention this, um, later this evening, about your toy drive with the Guardian Group with Flavorn, and it's just amazing. And if she, uh, or if anybody would like to volunteer, um, for that, it is gonna be on, um, December eleventh, from ten to seven, um, up to Wednesday. So, if anybody in the community, she said they're looking for sponsors, they're looking for toys, they're looking for, um, volunteers.
She says Little Help.
Little Help. So, I told her that I would be happy to spread the word, and, um, if anybody from the community, you know, would like to take part in that, it's gonna be a wonderful event for, um, for the Guardian families, so.
Yeah, and it's right there in Martinez, so if you come.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Brittany, thank you. Brittany, thank you.
Yeah.
When I go over there, it was a family environment where everybody over there, you could tell, are connected to them kids, and they're kids that really need connection, um, in, in their lifestyles and stuff, so thank you for being that leader, Brittany. All right, moving on now, we'll go to the, um, annual, um, financial review and five-year forecast. We have Treasurer Hugh Gerstey.
Thank you, uh, President Bosso, members of the board. It's my pleasure to go over a couple of financial reports to you tonight to help outline the fiscal status of the school district. There's three, there's three main reports that I do every year. Uh, I'm gonna talk about two of them today, but one of them that's under construction right now, we're wrapping up, uh, something that's called an annual comprehensive financial report. Uh, that report is used to help when we go out to sell bonds for construction projects, also for, um, the state auditor's office. That's the document that, that, that they audit. That's very technical in nature. It's about over a hundred and eighty pages long. Uh, it is what our, what I, like I said, it's what our annual financial report is, your annual financial audit is done on. Uh, I'm not gonna share a hundred and eighty pages with you, that's a lot, so I'm gonna skip that one, but that will be put on our website. We post that on our website, and it's also on the auditor states' website, uh, annually as well. The other two that I'm gonna talk about tonight, the annual financial review, is a, is a smaller, more condensed recap of what happened last fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. This is, this report talks about all of our fund types, our general fund, our special revenue funds, our debt service funds, our capital project funds, enterprise funds, agency funds, all the fund types that we have, and it just gives you a nice, a quick, uh, recap of everything and where money's come from and where they go. Uh, last but not least, I'll give you a recap of our five-year forecast. Uh, that is the five years in, that is discussed in this, or the current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, and it will run through twenty-twenty-nine. Uh, so, go ahead and go to the first slide on this one. So, this is our annual financial review. I wanna talk a little bit about our general fund revenues, and then I'm gonna talk about our general fund expenditures, and then next I'll talk about other fund types that make up our total financial package of our school district. So, general fund revenues, as compared to, this is fiscal year twenty-four and the June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four, uh, as compared to June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three, our revenues increased in our general fund about nine percent, or twenty-seven million dollars roughly. The main increase, so it came from our state funding. Uh, we were in the first year of the biennium of that, that, uh, state budget. We're currently in the second biennium of that. Or actually, our state funding has gone down a little bit this year. I'll talk about that later in the five-year forecast, but the first year of the biennium, they put a new base cost structure in. Uh, they also, it was the, they were putting, uh, the first time, uh, the Fair School Funding Plan was put in place two bienniums ago, one-third was put in, this is the, so now we have, uh, two-thirds, and then it will be fully, hopefully fully funded in the next, uh, budget cycle. So, putting in the new, uh, base cost amount and also putting in the next phase-in part really helped our school district with our, with our state funding. Go ahead and move forward to the next slide. General fund expenditures, and it's a little hard to see. Uh, you have this, you'll be able to look at it online, so you can see a little bit better. Operational expenditures increased roughly four point seven percent over fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. Most of these are primarily due to salaries and benefits, increased costs associated, and increased costs associated with our, our collective bargaining agreements, uh, modest base increases, step increases, uh, some additional, uh, staffing for, uh, special education and some other areas there. So, we kept that, uh, fairly, uh, if you look at what inflation did over that same period of time, it was pretty high, so four point seven percent overall was a pretty decent, uh, I think we held to our guns and kept that pretty down as, as, as much as we could. Uh, the other, other part of it, um, I wanna talk about is, if you break down our expenditures by function, we have instruction, seventy-two cents out of every dollar. You can see that big blue portion right there, seventy-two cents, and the maroon portion right next to it, seventy-two cents of every dollar goes to the instruction. Uh, I wanna also point out that another big chunk of it goes towards, uh, maintaining our buildings and our transportation department, so fourteen cents out of every dollar is spent on transportation and maintenance. So, if you put those two together, that's a big bulk of your overall expenditures that are coming out of the general fund for the, for those three, three items right there. So, just wanted to point that out. We can move forward to the next slide now. So, general fund, if you look back, sixty, seventy percent of all of our expenditures come from the general fund. The general fund is supported primarily by property taxes and by, uh, state funding. We're roughly sixty, forty districts, so sixty percent of our funds come from the state, forty percent come from property taxes. When you move forward into the other funds, the special revenue funds, the debt service funds, capital projects, enterprise, and internal service and agency, those come from special sources. So, those are totally separate from the general fund, and they do, these funds are set up in a way to account for special things. Our special revenue funds, roughly five percent of all of our revenue or all of our expenditures flow through our special revenue funds. These funds are things that account for federal, federal and state grants, things like your Title I program, your IDEA program, your Head Start program. COVID and ESSER funding was, was significant, uh, when those funds were coming in. Those are special revenue funds, so it's a special revenue for a special purpose. Debt service funds, this is kinda like your mortgage account. So, we collect, when we, uh, passed the first bond issue to build, uh, our buildings in two thousand twelve, that's when we did our elementary project, that was no new millage, uh, property tax. Uh, so people's property taxes didn't increase. We said, hey, if you pay the same amount of money now, we can, uh, enter into a new mortgage, get the funds, build the buildings, and if you just keep paying what you've been paying, we'll give you brand-new elementary schools. We did that on time and under budget. Our second project that we went out for was in twenty-eighteen. Um, that one, we have done that with our middle schools as well. So, we did the same thing. We said, hey, you keep paying the same amount, we'll, uh, collect those tax dollars, and we'll pay off our mortgage, and can, we'll give you these new buildings. So, debt service is only four percent of all of our expenditures. So, it's, it's a pretty small amount, when you think about it, you know, to have all these wonderful buildings that we put together for our, for our schools, our, our children. Capital projects funds, this is, right now, it's about two percent of all of our funds. When the buildings were being built, this was a big part of it, because we, we receive all our money at once, and then we spend it down as we build the buildings. So, when we were really, uh, cranking out the buildings in our elementary, uh, project and our middle school project, capital projects fund was a big part of our overall spend. Right now, it's down to two percent. The only thing that's really remaining is, in there, is we have a, a two-mill PI levy that was passed, uh, nineteen ninety, um, nineteen ninety-four. So, that one is, um, is two mil, generates about four and a half million dollars a year. So, we use that for roofs, paving, school buses, and technology replacement. We use those things to keep our roofs in place and all, all of our buildings in good shape. So, it's nice that we have that set aside money to maintain our buildings and maintain our, our facilities. Enterprise funds, uh, I wanna point this, this one out, it's about three percent of our overall expenditures. Primarily our food service operation, which is about a fifteen-million-dollar operation for our, for a district our size, that's, that's, that's a, a pretty big operation, fifteen million dollars. Lisa Hammack is our food service op, um, supervisor that is, oversees that whole program. She does a wonderful job. We are, we run that program in the black. What that means is that we're not, a lot of school districts throughout the state, um, their food service department doesn't run as efficiently, and they had to subsidize it with general fund dollars by transferring dollars out of the general fund into the food service fund. We have not had to do that here, uh, we had to do that here when I first got here. But since that time, we got things, uh, kinda put in place to not be able to, not have to do that. So, I'm real happy to say that Lisa's done a great job with that program and has been able to, uh, keep that in the black. Last but not least, our internal, internal service and agency funds, this accounts for about sixteen percent of our overall expenditures. These are pension obligations and also our, uh, we are self-insured for our health, healthcare. Our self-insurance fund is well-maintained. We have a, a good cash balance in our self-insurance fund, and, um, so our pension obligations are met. We are in good shape with our agency and the permanent service funds. I think the important reason to bring these up, if you're not, if you're not in good shape with these other funds, where's that money gonna come from? It's gonna come from your general fund. So, it's, it's really important, I believe, for board members and the community to know that we're looking at all those funds and making sure that the dollars are in place in those funds, so we're not having to subsidize with our general fund. Very important. A lot of times, those other funds don't get talked about a lot, but I think it's important to note that, um, those are in good shape. We can go ahead and move forward to, any questions on fiscal year twenty-twenty-four as it's? Let's go ahead and transition to the five-year forecast. Okay, so I'm gonna talk about, I have four overall slides. I'll talk about overall revenues, expenditures, and cash balances. Then I'll have some highlights on our revenues, and I'll highlight some of our changes in our expenditures. And then overall, I'll look at kinda where we stand compared to other school districts in Franklin County. So, this slide right here shows you, uh, the green, uh, represents revenues, the red represents expenditures, and the yellow line shows our cash balance from twenty-twenty-five all the way up to twenty-twenty-four. You can see we, we have a positive cash balance at the end of the, the five-year, uh, forecast period. I will note that we, it, it does appear that we may deficit spend this year, uh, and that may happen. It looks like it could happen in the future. We have some things that could go in our favor, uh, as, as far as state budgets. If state budgets improve, uh, that could help. There's some other things out there I'll talk about on the revenue side that could help with that. Uh, but overall, I just wanted to give you, this is a very conservative forecast, meaning that if we are two percent better in our revenues and two percent better in our expenditures, that creates a ten-million-dollar difference in our bottom line, because we're, we're looking at large budget numbers here. So, just to give you an idea, I like to stay with right around that two percent variance in either one. I don't wanna come to you as a big surprise and say, hey, things aren't coming in where we think they are, we're gonna have to make cuts. We don't wanna do that, so we wanna be conservative, and that's what I, what I've always said when I put this together. I like to make sure that the board knows that we try to keep a target cash balance of three to six months throughout the forecast. Currently, this forecast shows we have three to ten months throughout the whole period, so we're, we're in that target zone where we wanna be. Uh, we're getting a little closer down to that three months on the, on the far end in twenty-twenty-nine. So, these are, these are items that you gotta, you, you'll wanna keep in your head to think about as we move forward with future budgets, future ideas, future, uh, things that we wanna do in our school district. I also wanna point out that our last operating levy was in two thousand nine. Uh, that would, the, the theme of that levy was promises made, promises kept. Our promise at that time in two thousand nine is that we would last, we'd make that levy last, that operating levy last through two thousand thirteen. It is currently two thousand and twenty-four, and we can go back to the district to do that. Uh, so, and as you can see in our forecast, there's not a, there's not, uh, the deficit spending is something that we're gonna have to look at and kinda tackle, um, but it's not anticipated that we would need anything right now in the current five-year forecast. Moving forward to some revenue highlights. Property taxes, I told you, are roughly forty percent of our overall, uh, revenue that we get from, uh, that we receive, and then state funding is about sixty percent. So, there was something that happened in twenty-twenty-three called reappraisal. Reappraisal was a, was a big change in Franklin County. Our property values went up fifty percent for Class One, that's our residential taxpayers. Now, property taxes didn't go up fifty percent, because there's something called House Bill nine-twenty. As values go up, millage rate goes down, and as long as you're above this thing called a twenty-mil floor, that will work that way. If you get to the twenty-mil floor, then its values go up, there are some, uh, increases in property taxes. That, that's how that works. This last large increase in, in our valuation in twenty-twenty-three brought our property millage rate, our effective millage rate for Class One, that's residential, down from twenty-nine mils to twenty-point-eight mils. So, we're getting really close to that twenty-mil floor. Uh, so, we're gonna have to watch that to see what, how that affects our, our property tax revenues moving forward. Um, that, that is something that I've, I've had some offline conversations with each one of you about that. Uh, so, that's something that, you know, we wanna talk about as a community, and how does that work with our school district? There are some advantages to that, so we're gonna look through at how all those things work in our school district. The Fair School Funding Plan is another thing that's out there. Like I said, it was put in two bienniums ago. Uh, we have one more biennium, it, it's supposed to be phased in for the final one-third. Uh, hopefully, I'm, I'm hopeful that the, the, the final phase of that is put in place. What I do wanna point out is it's very, very important that the base cost, uh, is put in the new biennium. Because when you looked at, when we looked at this before, when we were rounding this same point, uh, doing a forecast back in twenty-three, uh, the base cost was looking at twenty-eighteen cost factors. They did move that up to twenty-twenty-two cost factors and for twenty-twenty-three budget, so it didn't, it didn't line up exactly. Hopefully, we get something different than the twenty-twenty-two cost factors, because when we looked at the differences between those last time, it was about a thirty-nine-million-dollar difference. We got thirty-nine million dollars more because they put those cost, new cost sets in there. So, as we're talking to legislators, as we're talking to our community, it's really important that they, they put both parts of the Fair School Funding Plan in, the, the cost sets and the phase-in. Those two things need to go in together. Uh, so, I'll keep you guys, I'll keep you all updated on where that stands as we move forward. Uh, another piece, we've been fortunate, uh, with, with the interest rates have been, uh, increased a lot. Uh, back when the, the whole market crash thing went down, uh, we were lucky to get twenty basis points on our car dollars. A hundred basis points, it means you earn one percent. So, twenty basis points is point two percent. That's, that's like not making any money. That's nothing. Even if you look at our, when, when, when we approve our financial report, you'll see we have some, some investments that are five percent. So, five percent investments coupled with larger cash balances has really bumped up our interest earnings, which has been, it's been, uh, very fortunate that we've been able to receive those, and I'm happy, happy to say that it's really helped our district now. Let's move on to expenditure. I'll talk you through a few expenditure highlights. Uh, we have, uh, a big part, about eighty percent of our budget is in salary and benefits. We have three, um, collective bargaining agreements that are set to expire in twenty-twenty, at the June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five, so we'll be negotiating with those groups, uh, in earnest, and we'll keep you up to date on that. Our substitute pay, we've also, uh, looked at that as being an issue as far as not having enough subs. So, we added some more incentives for, to get our, our subs in here as far as the, the pay increase, and also extended that, um, fifty-day, a hundred-day, a hundred-and-fifty-day, uh, supplement bonus to all classifications of subs. So, that, that's been important, too. I think we've seen the dividends that, as we get that word out more, I think that's really gonna help us out. Employee health insurance benefits, I have a, a good, uh, thing to report on that. Uh, we switched carriers a few years back with, uh, there were some bumps in the road with all that, but one of the main reasons we switched is because their discounting was, was much stronger than the one, the company that we left. I'm, I'm happy to say that our, our increase, our premium increase affected January one, twenty-twenty-five at zero percent. We were able to bargain down and get that premium rate at zero percent. That's a, that's a win for our employees, that's a win for our community. So, we'll be watching that, uh, very closely. I've projected eight percent increases in the years after that, but this, this particular year, it was actually a zero percent trend increase, which we're, we're really pleased with. I mentioned before that we have a separate fund that accounts for our health insurance, self-insurance dollars. We have about a four-month carryover in there. That means that we have enough cash balance to, if we didn't receive any more premiums, we could pay out our claims. Right now, with everything being electronic, our claims are paid pretty fast. I mean, they're paid almost immediately, so having a four-month carryover balance in our health insurance fund is a, is a strong position to be in. So, I wanna make sure that you know that we're not gonna have to, uh, supplement our health insurance, uh, fund with any general fund dollars. Purchased services and materials and supplies, we're really. Purchased services and materials and supplies, we're really monitoring inflation on that. We've had, I, I sat down with a board member, Ms. Liskiney, on Friday, and we talked a little, a lot about all this stuff. She she oversees the financial section of our board agenda. So we work hand in hand looking through these things. And we talked about some specific areas that we'd like to try to tackle, to try to see if we can get some, you know, kind of shave down some of the costs. We have, we have a lot of homeless students that we have to transport, and that's, that's become a, we want to talk about a line item that's moved up very, very quickly, that is one. So we're going to look at some, maybe some alternatives or some other ways to do that. But it's, that's a really, that's a really tough one to deal with, and it's been one that's moved up quite a bit. Capital outlay. We use most of our capital outlay dollars right now in the general fund to keep our network strong, keep our infrastructure of our network, our computer network, strong. One of the bonuses of doing that, we also have something called E-rate. So because we are a school or a library, we can apply for E-rate funds. So every dollar we spend, we get about 80 cents of those back. So we, you'll see the full expenditure, the accounting for it is, you'll see the full expenditure, but we receive some monies back in a, on a refund of the prior year expenditure. So that that comes in both ways there. So really pleased to say that we have good networks, strong networks, and we're getting 80% of it paid for by the federal government. Go ahead and move forward to the next slide. A little hard to see, but I, what I will tell you, this is something I bring up in several of the presentations I do. The information on that slide right there is for, it's for tax year '23, flex year '24. It looks at Class One residential property tax rates. So Class One residential property tax rates, effective millage rates on what our, what our property owners pay to to live here in Southwestern City Schools. The far-left column shows all property, property levy types. We have operating levies, we have permanent improvement levies. I told you, we have a 2-mill one of those, and we have debt service levies. Those are the ones that pay off our mortgage to pay for our buildings. So if you add all three of those levy types, and that's the only kind of levy type you can have besides a income tax, you can't have an income tax. These are property taxes only. You look at that grayed-out area at the bottom, where 15th out of 16th is how how much property taxes we we levy against our community, against our homeowners. I can tell you, I've been in a few, I wouldn't say arguments, but I've been in a few heated discussions in grocery store lines. When I hear people talk about Southwestern has the highest taxes in the county, and I can't believe the property taxes here in the, in Southwestern, I always am ready to show them this information. This is on the Franklin auditor, Franklin County Auditor's website. I didn't make this, these numbers up, they come straight from the Franklin County Auditor's website. So that's where we are as far as far-left column is, is all levy types. The middle column is operating levies only. So exclude any property, any debt service or exclude any PI levy. This is just operating our schools on a day-to-day basis. We're also 15th out of 16. And if you look at the far-right, that's our, from the 2023 CUP report, that is the expenditure per pupil. And we are currently 13th out of 16 school districts about how much we spend per pupil. So we have a good value for our community. This is proof of that. Now, Ms. Liskiney and I had some conversations about, is this good enough? Is this, is this where we want to be as a school district? That's, that's for us as a community and a board to decide. So we haven't talked about that much, but I think that's, that's something we're talking about now, about, you know, where do we really want to be? What, what kind of education do we want to provide to our students? And these things cost money. So here's the facts, we've been in these, this quadrant for a long time. Maybe it's time to start thinking about things a little differently. So any questions that you, you all?
I have a question, whenever.
Sure.
Okay, whenever I see these, I always like to be reminded. When you're saying, when you have that tax rate of 25.42, that, that's the millage, right? So for example, if I have a $100,000 home, how much am I paying to Southwestern City Schools in my taxes?
Okay, so property taxes are calculated this way. So if you, if every, if a house, if you have $100,000 of value, multiply that by 35%, that's assessed value. So 35% of $100,000 is $35,000 is what they're going to tax. So one mil is $1 for every $1,000. So just take the zeros off, that's $35, one mil. So every mil is $35 for a $100,000 home. Then you can just put that on that number there.
Sorry, if I had a $100,000 home, I'd be paying $35, like.
35 times the 20 mils.
Okay.
Per year, not per month, per, per year, not per month.
Right.
Yes. It's, it's not, a mil is $1 for every $1,000 of that, of value. And we calculate value here in Ohio for all property types, 35% of the, of value.
Not a mil.
Good question. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I always have a good time talking to guys. It's good to hear from you. We're blessed with this guy here. Thank you so much. Moving on now, do we, we're moving on to board reports, any board reports? The none, we got public participation related to agenda items, and we do have one speaker, Kelly Villan. Kelly?
Thank you to the superintendent and board for allowing time and space for public to comment on agenda items. During board meetings like this one, with the first reading of 35 revised policies, public participation is not just crucial, but necessary in order to hold our board accountable and the public informed. While many of the 35 proposed revisions have administrative or grammatical revisions included, I would like to draw the public's attention on P O 5780 on student-parent rights. According to the policy, it has not been revised in two decades, and thus, a new 21st century perspective is important. However, the components of this policy that are being rescinded, the enumeration of students' rights, concern me. I recognize that just because a certain right or rights are or are not enumerated in district policy does not actually rescind them or prevent students from exercising these rights. However, as recent Supreme Court decisions have illustrated, unless a right is explicitly expressed, it may not be recognized or inferred, enforced. As the policy currently states, quote, "As part of the educational process, students should be made aware of their legal rights," end quote. How are we to help create an informed, involved citizenry if we do not help educate that budding citizenry about their rights? Our Constitution's First and Fourteenth Amendments ensure students' rights to freedom of religion, speech, press, assembly, petition, due process, and equal protection. These rights, as I've spoken about at other school board meetings, do not stop the school property line. I would like the superintendent or the Board of Education to explain to the public why the following statements and rights are now being stricken from district policy. A student's civil rights, including the right to be, to equal educational opportunity and freedom from discrimination, the responsibility not to discriminate against others. A student's right to attend public schools, the responsibility to attend school regularly and observe school rules essential for permitting others to learn at school. A student's right to due process of law with respect to suspension and expulsion. A student's right to free inquiry and expressions, responsibility to observe rules regarding those rights. And a student's right to privacy, which includes privacy in respect to students' school records. And perhaps we can be present as our new slogan is, and be present. If these are voted to be stricken from district policies, how then, as part of the educational process, will students be made aware of their legal rights or of legal authority of the Southwestern City School District Boards of Education to make and delegate authority to its staff and to make rules regarding orderly operations of the schools? Why were these changes proposed? Whose decision was it to remove these rights? I look forward to hearing about your reasoning in a public manner. Thank you.
Get somebody back, you, Kelly, on that.
Oh, yeah, we have about 38 different policies. Yeah, we'll touch on that only.
Moving on now to student and staff achievement liaison with Kelly Martindale.
So we've got a lot of great things to talk about tonight. All right, so first, on the agenda here of our student achievements, congratulations to the following students who were performers in the OCC All Academic Honors Choir. From Central Crossing High School, we have Charlie Grubb, Noah Martin, Lydia Alexander, and Chloe Snyder. From Grove City High School, we have Aiden Stamen, Gunner Davis, Madison Nessler, and Hannah Mayer. And from Westland High School, we have Emily Johnson, Luisa Morano Garcia, Rem Candle, Kendall, excuse me, Anna Trey Shaw. All of these students had the opportunity to make music with 124 students from 31 schools at the Ohio Capitol Conference Academic League. They rehearsed and learned with Ottervine's local professor, Dr. Gail Walker, and had the opportunity to hear voice faculty in Ottervine's crowd perform a short concert. They got to learn about Ottervine University and its course offerings, and then performed in the evening concert with all of the participants. Congratulations to them for being to enjoy that time at Ottervine. Congratulations to Norton Middle School eighth grader, Hotanell Nazariu, forgive me if I didn't, who is named the prestigious academy program, named into the academy program of the Columbus Symphony Orchestra. As a concert-based instrumentalist, he performed with the Columbus Symphony Orchestra's Chamber of Strings earlier this month at Capitol. And then congratulations to Southwestern Career Academy Culinary Arts student Alexis and, I'm trying to pronounce this one right, Ariselli, who won the recent burger battle with their creation, the Binge Burger. They beat out 24 other teams, including two others from Southwestern Career Academy, to take home this year's prize. Their burger will be featured on the winter menu at Academy Grill. And if you haven't been, I highly recommend, I have basically like a standing weekly reservation there where I go and enjoy and get to experience the students showing off all the things that they're learning. So come out and taste this masterpiece, these two amazing students. And then congratulations to Grove City High School's NJ ROTC rifle team, who achieved an impressive victory at the Area 14 Rifle Championship earlier this month, scoring 2,013 points, which was 150 points ahead of the second-place team. And then Team Two secured third place, and then Team Three finished in eighth place. We have so much of students do really, really well at that. So congratulations. And then individually, Cadet Caleb Griffin claimed first place overall, followed by Sebastian Anthony in second place, and Jack Boyer in third. Additionally, Cadet Griffin excelled in the prone position, finishing in first place. Sebastian Anthony took first place in kneeling position. So congratulations to these great. And we're going to move on to staff achievements. At the end of October, attendees to the Ohio State University's College of Education and Human Ecology Symposium heard from staff members Emily Bricker, who is a teacher at Blue Park Middle School, Josh Doran, who is a district tech liaison, and Phil Freeman from Grove City High School. We presented two sessions under the umbrella of Ed Revolution, transforming education with digital innovation. These event participants heard from these tech leaders about coding with Spheros and drones and how to bring coding to life in the classroom. That sounds actually. Congratulations to them, to be able to do that. And congratulations to all the participants, they got to learn from them. Congratulations to Westland High School football coach Trent Williamson on being named the Ohio Capitol Conference Capital Division Coach of the Year. Really exciting. All right, and then for our Southwestern City School District gives back, two really cool things to mention. On the first day off of school last month, Franklin Heights High School football players, along with the coaches, communities, and schools, and volunteers gathered to get back to the community by handing out free lunches during the Second Annual Falcons Feed Event. This initiative was started last year by senior Geo Rufus and was created to support his local community. With the food donations by local businesses, Geo's goal of doubling the meals from last year was achieved, and they served more than 500 meals to the Heights community. And then last month, Jackson Middle School National Junior Honor Society students led a school-wide candy drive to benefit Feed the Kids Columbus, Feed the Kids in an organization that strives to ensure food for insecure children in central Ohio to make sure that they have access to nutritional meals and snacks so they are able to learn and grow. In total, Jackson, Ohio, Jackson, Jackson students collected over 500 pounds of candy to donate. Some happy kids waiting to go Jaguars. So that wraps up my student and staff achievement report. And I will say, what I did also see today, to piggyback off of staff achievement, is that our band director at Grove City High School got an honor today. I wish I'd written it down, it was an Ohio State honor, so I'll talk about that in December with more, with more details. But I did see that, that's, okay, now I'm done.
Thank you so much, Kelly. Moving on now to item extraction, fiscal and operational management with Ms. Liskin.
Thank you, President Oso. This evening, under fiscal and operational management, we have eight action items. Number one is revised permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2024-25. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised permanent appropriations, CX 1. Number two is investments in financial statements for October 2024. It is recommended that in accordance with Section 135.14 of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education approve October investments, CX 2, and cash position reports for the month of October 2024, CX 3, as submitted. Number three is payment of bills. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve payment of bills according to the list of checks for the month of October 2024, CX 4. Donate, number four is donations. The total donations of $50,791, CX 5. And just a couple shout-outs on that. We had some wonderful donations to our Southwest Career Academy from Sinclair College, so great. Also, Boy Scout Troops 136 and 7136 donated pumpkins to our Southwestern preschool center, so thank you, Scouts. And of course, Douglas Goddard of Bonzi, always helping out our Styles Elementary School by donating 500 coats. So just a couple shout-outs there, thank you very much. Number five is authorization to pay bills in accordance with Section 5705.41 of the Ohio Revised Code. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay bills for October, which were not processed in accordance with Section 5705.41 of the Ohio Revised Code, CX 6. Number six is agreement with the YMCA of Central Ohio. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with the YMCA of Central Ohio to provide an alternative educational program at Brook Park Middle School in the amount of $269,600 for the 2024-25 school year, CX 7. Just a little background in that, the district has provided the PALS program since 2000, which is positive alternative for students. The PALS program does provide a positive pathway for students in lieu of serving a suspension or being expelled. This year, we did increase seats in the program from 20 to 30 seats. And that is where that increase came from. Number seven is appointment of Rich and Gillis Law Group. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize Jeffrey A. Rich and the law firm of Rich and Gillis Law Group, LLC, to represent the Board of Education in real estate tax matters as required by law for calendar year 2025. Some background on that is the district has engaged the Rich and Gillis Law Group since the 1980s. And Rich and Gillis Law Group has consistently defended and bolstered our tax base by ensuring commercial properties are being taxed properly based on current market values, CX 8. And number eight, approval of the five-year forecast. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize, approve, the five-year forecast as presented, CX nine. And after reviewing these items, I would like to move them for approval.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Boso?
Uh, yes. Moving on now for Items for Action again under policy with Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes. For our policies, we have one, first readings of one new policy, two deleted or rescinded policies, and thirty-five revised policies. So with these, there's, um, a lot to go over. Um, there's a couple I want to bring some attention to. One is the first reading. Um, I meant to go over this. We had so many that were changing, some that were moving. Um, I wanted to bring attention to this one policy, zero one six five. Um, just the wording of it, I thought we should consider, um, changing the wording of it. Maybe it will help with the process of how the agendas are created. Um, on this policy, it states the agenda for all meetings of the Southwestern City School Board of Education shall be prepared by the superintendent to consultation with the board president, which is great. But it might be nice to change it to, um, a suggestion of maybe something like, um, prepared by the board president in consultation with the superintendent and treasurer. I thought it would be good to, um, include both superintendent and treasurer. So that way it kind of gives a pre, preference that it's the board that is doing the policy. So kind of give more ownership to the board for, um, creating the agenda and playing more of a key role when the agendas are created. So, okay, it's the first reading, something to think about. I meant to, um, touch on that before, um, with the policy committee, but, um, I don't know any thoughts on that, or if it's just find out is.
Well, I definitely think it's something that me and Randy, me, the board president, whoever's sitting in this seat, need to get together as a unit with you, I think is very important, whoever else, to look over that agenda to make sure the direction this board wants to go. So I can see where you're coming from.
Yeah, so that's one to think about with that one. And then, um, the two deleted ones. So this one's taking over for the school board meetings and special meetings. That's what this one covers. And now on to the thirty-five revision ones. And to try to answer some of your questions now, when it, um, you asked, uh, who creates this or why are we doing this and that concept and enter that portion. Um, so we use Neola for our policies. Um, two big ones are OSBA or Neola. And Neola puts out recommendations twice a year, once in the spring and once in the fall. And typically, this fall one is really big because over the summer, all these laws are passed and Ohio Revised Codes are updated and this, and how that goes. And most of these policies reflect an Ohio Revised Code. So when there's updates, it's typically because the Ohio Revised Code was updated, so the policies we have need to reflect what the law is. So when it comes to that one specifically, repairing some student rights, um, I can't pull up. I was trying to pull it up right now while everyone's talking, but I believe some of these are already in other policies. So it was redundant, it wasn't redundant, but it cross-references other policies. So what Neola was trying to do was to shrink the number of policies we have because there's already a policy out there that covers that. So, um, I agree with you, those things should still be, and they are. I just couldn't, at this moment, find an exact policy that does cover what you, what you were asking about was missing. But I know, um, Dr. Lusher probably find it faster than I can, but I'm sure we'll get back with you on that. So I know there's a lot of confusion, and that's one of my big ones too, was how is this working and why are we doing it? And I think almost every policy committee meeting, I'm like, okay, wait a second. What are we doing again? Because I ask that every time. Why is this one happening or why is it not happening? Um, just like the one I mentioned with the superintendent, like why are, how was that changed from before? Or why wasn't that in there before? Um, because it should be the superintendent and the board president and the treasurer, you know, going forward. So these are all things that should always be discussed. Um, and we talked about all thirty, forty of them. Um, so, but that's why we're going over it. Like, I hope everyone's had a chance to go through it, and we did. Um, even though Neola presents the board with, hey, these are recommendations, we can always customize them for our community and our district. So that's something we try to do. All of the questions on that, but no, I know Dr. Lusher will definitely follow up and answer better than I can. Um, so, all of that being said, that's my next part. Um, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the first reading of all of these policies.
Thank you so much. Did I get a second on that?
You're doing the first reading.
Yes. So first reading of a new policy, two rescinded, rescinded, and thirty-five provisions.
There you go.
Is that the way to say it?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Liskini.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskini. Can I get a roll call?
Ms. D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale? Ms. Peterson here?
Yes.
Mr. Boso?
Uh, yes. We're gonna go back to this.
We're gonna come back over here.
For facility development.
All of them in the same place, yes. So this one with the, what Mr. Garseig was talking about with those food project funds, um, Mr. Mark Meadows, um, told me that this is where this is coming from. So when we're asking, sometimes I always look at this and I'm like, well, who's got the money for this? Where is it coming from? Garseig knows. He will tell you right in the budget which part of that pie chart this money is coming from. So, um, this is a resolution authorizing Southwestern City School District to advertise a limitation for bids for a contract to replace the lock-in cooler and freezer at Central Crossing High School and the Southwestern Career Academy.
This one does come from the food service fund, so she's paying for.
Okay, so food service fund is not the project. Okay.
She's paying for her own freezer.
Okay. Also, Mrs. Hammer is paying for this. Okay. It's coming out of that one, not the project one. I knew it was one of all you had in the pie charts. Where am I at now?
After you read this item?
After I read this item, I move it for passage.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second on that?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a roll call?
I know.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale? Mr. Boso?
Uh, yes. Moving on now, back to Mrs. Martindale with Items for Action and their student, school, and community.
Yeah, I have, uh, two items for action that involve, uh, our NJROTC programs at two different high schools. The first one being Central Crossing High School NJROTC cadets have the opportunity to show the Charleston, South Carolina, and spend time onboard the U S S Woodham and visit the surrounding. Uh, this trip will take place March nineteenth through the twentieth. Students will miss two days of school. All trip expenses are paid by NJROTC boosters. And Grove City High School NJROTC rifle team has the opportunity to travel to Ennisson, Alabama, uh, to compete. Trip expenses are paid by fundraising to U S Navy Funds and Booster Club. Uh, students are to miss two days of school as this trip takes place February fifteenth through the nineteenth, but both of those seem like pretty great opportunities for our students. And then my third one actually has to do with reappointment to the Board of Trustees. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the reappointment of Miss Lisa Leisure to Southwest Public Library's Board of Trustees for a term to begin January first, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty thirty-one. All three of these items, I move them for action.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second?
Second, Liskini.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskini. Roll call, please.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Boso?
Uh, yes. All right, moving on to personnel and items for action with, um, Peterson. Well, personnel, I did say personnel, I'm sorry.
All the P's. Um, okay, hiring continues to be ongoing, and we are making progress. Slowly but surely, but we are making progress, and we will take all of the progress that we get. Just to let you know that, um, the next hiring event in the district will be on Monday, November twenty-fifth, and it's at Franklin Heights High School. It's gonna be four-thirty to six-thirty in the cafeteria. Um, of course, we are strongly pushing for transportation-specific recruitment, but we are, um, speaking, um, and interviewing or answering questions for all the positions. We are continuing to attempt to hone in on our transportation area. So please share the word, um, and have individuals come out and attend that event. But the hiring events have been going well. Our numbers for tonight, we have six personnel items involving two hundred and thirty-four persons, twelve certificated, uh, resignations, retirements in there, thirteen classified resignations, fifteen certificated changes in employment status, a hundred and fifty certificated employment, a hundred and twenty-five of those are supplementals, two classified changes in employment, and eighteen classified employments. After reviewing this report, I move them for passage.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second on that?
Second, D'Angelo Steele.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Mr. Boso?
Uh, yes. Moving on now to public participation to non-agenda items. We do not have anybody this evening. Um, items for discussion with any of the board members?
I just have a couple things. You can go ahead.
Go ahead. I have one thing. I have one thing about that. I didn't know which portion to talk about it, but the school calendar that was proposed for twenty-five, twenty-six, um, some community members have reached out to me and wanted, um, questioning why we wouldn't end school on a Monday. So that's just something that if we could take a closer look at, or Mr., like if you get any input on the, um, school ending on a Monday, or what we could, um, potentially think about that or play with that, if that's like set in stone or whatnot, but, um, from a parent perspective and community member perspective, ending school on a Monday, um, is, I don't know if that happens, but I think.
That happened a lot, Matt?
Happened a lot.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
There were a couple things played into it. I think Election Day is played into it because that's a non, you know, non-workday, non-student day. So that, that, you know, that changed last couple years where it's Election Day for, uh, in November, then also Election Day in May. Um, where some school districts don't do both those days. So, um, definitely did that public, or that public, uh, intake of that, uh, feedback like that, we'll take a look at it and see what, if it makes it work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if leap year is in there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, 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 that thought just like popped in my head, you know? No, it is not, but when you have one, you know how this was a leap year. But then it tends to shift your dates going forward, and so things look a little bit off until your cycle kind of smooths back out until another leap year happens. So that's what made me think about that, just because it popped in my head that it was one. Yeah, so it makes it, it makes it look like, wow, how did we end a last day on a Monday? It lived in my head. But yes, that's how it looks like a last day with plans potentially on a Monday versus what I think we normally get like a Wednesday or Thursday, somewhere in there. And it's literally, that's like two days before, with just a few other things kind of landed that way because of that leap year.
Ms. Liskini?
Um, just a couple things. Um, I wanted to mention, um, East Franklin Elementary School, um, is in need of extra clothing in their clinic. So, community members, um, if you are looking for volunteer, um, opportunities or ways to help out, um, they're looking for new clothing and underwear, sizes four to twelve. Of course, elastic waistbands, please. Um, and that's for East Franklin Elementary. Um, just a shout-out to Finland, um, Middle School Cheer Squad. They held, um, their first cheer camp for the Finland Elementary School students in October. And I just want to say, great job, ladies, um, for doing that. It's a great opportunity to connect with younger girls for your sport and to get the community involved. So great job with that. Um, Derby Woods Elementary School is looking for a crossing guard to help. So if you know anybody in that area that would want to help as a crossing guard, um, please get ahold of Mr. Novar. Um, and then last but not least, the Southwestern, um, City School District Education Foundation is holding their holiday online silent auction starting tomorrow. And I have flyers up here if anybody wants to, um, I'll leave these out. And if anybody wants to grab one, scan the QR code. Um, they have great items online. Um, uh, gift baskets that you can, um, purchase Christmas gifts or whatever. Uh, it's a great organization providing scholarships for our students in the district. Um, and if you don't need a gift basket, you can at least donate. Well, that's it.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on now, we're gonna go into executive session. It's recommended the Board of Education adjourn for executive session according with policy zero one six six to prepare for, um, conduct or review of negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees to consider the appointment, employment discipline promotion or compensation of a public employee or official in discussion with the board's legal counsel of disputes involving the board that are subject to pending and immediate court action. You're more than welcome to stay. We don't know how long we're gonna be in there. Um, can I get a motion to go to executive session? Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Can I get a second?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Roll call.
Ms. Martindale?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Liskini?
Yes.
Mr. Boso?
Um, yes. Thank you, everybody, for being here.